This meeting is being recorded. And now, for the school committee policy of Norwood Public Schools, I am charged with responsibility to be the superintendent for purposes of electing the chair. Therefore, this meeting will now come to order, and nominations are now in order. Do I have a motion for chair of the Norwood School Committee?
I nominate Anne Marie Mazzola as chair.
Do I have a second?
Second it.
Is there any discussion on that? There's their nomination and second for Anne Marie Mazzola to be chair of the Norwood School Committee? Are there any other nominations? Any discussion? Hearing no other nominations, will someone move the nominations to be closed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. I think Joan seconded, but she muted, so I'll second.
I am talking to myself over here. I seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded the nomination to be closed. Those in favor of nominations being closed by roll call vote?
Yeah. Sorry.
Ms. Ebbingdon?
Yes.
Ms. Stewart?
Yes.
Ms. Mazzola?
Yes.
Ms. Giblin?
Yes.
Okay, it has been voted four to zero. So those, it has been moved and seconded that Anne Marie Mazzola be nominated as chair of the Norwood School Committee. Those in favor and favor the nomination, please say aye by roll call vote. I'll actually go roll call. Ms. Ebbingdon?
Yes.
Ms. Stewart?
Yes.
Ms. Mazzola?
Yes.
Ms. Giblin?
Yes.
Okay, we have a chair. The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Ayes.
I will take it back. So, second item in our reorg is to elect a vice chair. Is there, do I have any motions for our nominations for vice chair at this time?
I'd like to nominate Teresa Stewart.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. Any other nominations? In the call script? Do I have to close this, just like Tim did? Okay, do I have a? Fortunately, yes. So hearing no other nominations, will someone move the nominations to be closed?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second it.
Okay. Now, I have moved by Joan and seconded by Teresa to close the nominations. I will roll call vote to close them. Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, so that passes four to zero to close the nominations. It's been moved and seconded that Teresa Stewart be nominated the vice chair of the Norwood School Committee. I'll roll call vote for this. Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Teresa is the new vice chair of the Norwood School Committee for this year. Great. At this time, it is not specifically in our, sorry, did someone say something? Did I echo? I must have echoed. Not specifically on the agenda, but we also, at this time, should do our reorganization. Teresa, yes, please.
Sorry, point of order. We need to nominate our secretary.
Yes. Wait. Yes, no, sorry. You are absolutely right. I was thinking of Donna when, and we already did that to make sure that we got her in. So we do need to nominate our secretary. Traditionally, our secretary is the superintendent. Mr. Luff, would you so kindly take the nomination of being our secretary?
Um, okay, I will, I will.
So I'm going to move that with your permission, and will there be a second for that?
Second it.
Second it.
We'll pick Teresa. And we will close those nominations out promptly, and so all this, I'll vote for all those in favor of Mr. Luff. Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. At this time, we also need to nominate, or we also need to reelect or rechoose our tech board representative. Mr. Luff, would you also be willing to be our tech board representative for the next year?
Yes, I would.
Do I need to vote on that one too?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that Mr. Luff is their tech board representative for the next school year.
I moved by Teresa. Do I have a second? Seconded by Kate. Roll call vote, Kate? I changed it up.
Yes, sorry.
Teresa?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes four to zero, so that it should clear up our nominations for this year. We have tech board secretary, vice chair and chair, and we, at our previous meeting, elected Donna Dolanar as our clerk. Perfect. I didn't miss anybody, right? So then, at this time, we also need to appoint the subcommittees for the, for the committee. My words are failing me. I need some coffee. So, at this time, I will be staying on the budget subcommittee with Ms. Stewart. Ms. Stewart will remain chair of the budget subcommittee. And then and then Ms. Ebbingdon will may remain on the policies subcommittee as chair, and Dr. Giblin will be joining her as the newest member of the policies subcommittee and re, newest and oldest, maybe? I don't know, Teresa has that, that honor. But, so that would be the reorganization of our subcommittees. I don't think that, I think that's it, right? We do have other committees, but those are the two main ones that we need to make sure that we appoint to. I should get a vote on that, yes? For codifying reasons?
Move to approve the subcommittees as you've just outlined.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Joan? I see your mouth moving, yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes four to zero, and that is our new subcommittees for this year. Okay, unless I am missing any other reorg, we can move on to the next item on the agenda, which is approval of minutes. In our packets, we have two sets of minutes, actually. Five sets of minutes. We have business meeting minutes from May 15th and June 5th, and we also have executive session meeting minutes from June 5th, June 12th, and June 24th. We don't need to take any of these separately, anybody, or is there any that anyone wants to call out separately, or can we vote on these altogether?
I think the four of us were at all of these, Anne Marie, so we can do them all.
Perfect. Do I have a motion to approve these meeting minutes?
So moved.
I move by Teresa. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Kate beat you to it. So seconded by Kate, and I'll take roll call. Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so those pass four to zero. All right, moving right along to the next item, correspondence. Mr. Luff, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not, ma'am.
Great. Moving on to the next is the warrant report. So I'll read into the record the warrants that I signed for this week. I signed warrants in the amounts of $2,104,701.59, $2,105,0498.22, $1,151,227.71, $48,459.58, $13,211.82, $6,398.18, $96,718.42, $166,755.92, $68,321.72, $154,867.44, $44,515.92, $1,026,685.26, $69,052.23, $56,142.62, $658,867.15, $159,560.52, $1,888.24, and $135,277.35 for a total of $8,544,41.41. Are there any questions on that warrant report? Seeing none, we will move to our next item on the agenda, which is public comment. Reminder to the public that you can you can access public comment for remote meetings by contacting the superintendent's office by noon the day of our meeting to receive a remote link that would be active for their public comment period only. Another reminder to the public that when we are in hybrid or in-person format, you can also access public comment by calling the superintendent's office to put your name on our public comment list, as well as receiving a meeting link to our hybrid meetings. You can also come to the meeting room at the Savage Center and sign your name in at the meeting time. Mr. Luff, did anybody request a meeting link for public comment this evening?
We've had no request for public comment this evening.
Fabulous. So at 7:26 PM, I will declare public comment closed. All right, moving on to our next item is appearances, and our first appearance is actually Ms. Stewart. Are going to give us an appearance and discuss the interface activity that's been happening.
Yeah, just really briefly, every six months, we get a report from Williams James College, who hosts the Interface Referral System that we have been a part of since November 2018. You have the full report in your packet. So just a couple of statistics I wanted to share is that since November 2018, 488 individuals or families have utilized the service. So that is 488 people and families that have been connected to mental health support and helped, which I think is phenomenal, and I continue to be really proud that Norwood, as a school district and as a town, offers this service to our community. From December 1st until the end of May, when the six months closed out, there were 44 cases that were opened. And that's right about the average number that we tend to see every six months. As has been the trend for a while, the top two reasons people are seeking referrals are for anxiety and depression. But also, this past six month cycle, the third reason was trauma. So I know as a school district, we have committed last year to a lot of trauma-informed PD, and I would just encourage us to continue to do that because we see in a variety of data collection that that is very much needed. So unfortunately, very sadly, more families in Norwood are experiencing trauma and seeking out support and resources around that. This service is for anybody from toddlerhood through adulthood, but 50% of the cases open. So 22 of the 44 cases opened in the last six months were for young children, six through 12. And if you look back at who we used to see the highest number of referrals to a couple of years ago, it was our adolescents. And the trend recently has been shifting to our elementary school kids, which I know is something we have heard from our elementary principal team about those needs of those students, and that bore out in this data as well. It's mostly females seeking support. It remains mostly Caucasian families who are utilizing the interface system. However, if you look at the report, other ethnicities are also increasing, and that is something that we've been talking about in the School Health Council and with Liz Barrett, who is the director of the Mental Health First Aid in the town, is how can we make sure we continue to market to everybody in Norwood? Another trend is that it's mostly families with commercial insurance who are utilizing the service. However, those who have Medicaid and Medicare are increasing in numbers as well. So again, we just want to continue to make sure everybody has access to the service. And then you can see in the report each school, how many families or individuals per school, and the school that had the most families reach out for support in the six-month cycle was the Oldham, which also aligns with the six to 12 age group. So that's just the high level of the data. Again, we talked about it a little bit in the last School Health Council meeting. This data goes to Stacy Lane, who is the director of the Norwood Public Health. I'm not sure if this gets reported up to the Board of Health, but there are things here that I've begun to talk about with Mr. Luff that I would love us to continue looking at and cross-referencing with other data and just make sure we're supporting our families. Are there any questions or comments on the packet information?
I might just add that I met with Ms. Barrett this morning and had a long conversation about program, and we'll be getting together in, at the end of August, likely we'll have a meeting just to kind of go through next steps in the process with the big grant funding.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Teresa? Okay, thank you for that. So we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, and this, we have, joining us, Ms. Ferrera, and I didn't see Mr. Olson. He is not joining, correct?
He is here.
Is he? Okay. Oh, I see him now. It gets hidden when your face is not there. It kind of goes into the ether, and they are here to speak to us about the elementary student handbook.
And before I hand it over to them, Chair Mazzola, I did put a memo in the school committee agenda that lays out both things for the elementary student handbook and the middle school handbook, and I'll let these two talk about the minor changes that are in the elementary student handbook, but I want to be clear that after reading the policy, your policy around recess and when it can be taken away, I feel very strongly that that language clearly says that it cannot unless it is a health and safety student kind of idea, and I truly believe that taking away any active participation by students is counterproductive to behavior management. So I talked to the principals, and they modified that section to be reflective practices rather than reflective recess. I understand why they wanted to have that in play, but we're going to allow to try those practices outside of the recess time, not at recess. See how those look, and we're going to collect data on that. We're going to have conversations in August about what health and safety to students actually means, whether it's bullying piece or it's a threat, what those things are, and we'll come back with some more data at a later time to the policy subcommittee. I can do that, Joe, yes. So from there, I'll let, I'll let folk, and I'm requesting a vote to approve the handbook tonight.
I can jump in about the elementary handbook if you'd like. And Diane can jump in as well. Most of the changes that we made were more factual, like the table of contents was changed. The superintendent will have a new letter. We changed the term dates, and then we added free and reduced free breakfast and lunch information. And then we also added, that changed the title, non-coordinated T V D and any grammatical thing. So the only real substantive changes that we added were adding in smartwatches to electronic devices because we have been seeing an increase of students who have smartwatches that work away from their phone, or even if they're close to their phone, using it for texting and such. So just letting the community know that they can't be used for that, just really for telling time. And also, as Superintendent Luff just discussed, we have those reflective practices in there, and you can see the memo and see the language, and maybe Ms. Ferrer can also discuss that a little bit, but we are definitely using those practices with students as needed, not during recess time. I know at the Oldham, for example, we do it in the morning. We have a S E L tutor the past two years who have students who need some time to reflect on some behavior issues and then make amends and do some restorative moves. We have them coming into, into school in the morning, sometimes during the school day, but we try not to take away academics as well without taking away recess too. So the morning has worked well for us, but that's just something that we're moving toward in general, I think, at the elementary schools, is having the students reflect on what happened, reflect on how to maybe not do that again, and then make amends or restore when needed.
Yep, another time might be a working lunch, you know, recess and lunch piggyback off each other in many instances, so this half an hour time there, 20 minutes time there that could be worked at too, so. But that's basically it.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Wilson or Ms. Ferrer? Kate?
Not a question as much as I'm personally looking forward to seeing the data on that and how it goes, especially as it relates to schools communicating about how you all use it maybe differently, or sharing that information, and then looking at a big picture how it's helping. Thank you.
I do think that we're doing, I could add, we are doing the same practices. We're just fitting them into different time slots, maybe a little bit differently, depending on the person that's taking that role on. In my case, the school adjustment counselor prefers to do it in the morning and has lunch bunches during lunch, so it depends on the, on the school and the person doing it, but we are trying to calibrate in the, in how we're working on those restorative practices and working together to make sure we're updated on those, on those practices. But I do agree, some more data is needed, and it'd be interesting to, to look at how that's impacting students' recidivism.
And I will out myself as I was one of the parents who bought my child a standalone watch that worked without a phone being necessary, so it was only a matter of time before this was added to the electronics devices. I would get, you know, a quick little text message during the day. I'm like, cut it out! That is only for telling time right now, and so I actually nicely have the ability to shut that down from my phone, so I would frequently shut it down, and it would only be able to tell time during the day, which was not, I was not a very popular person when I did that. Kate?
This is a topic of conversation that's coming up more and more in communities, and I know that some families don't always check in on their handbooks, I mean realistically, and so I wonder if there's additional, like sort of separate newsletter-y type communications where we can say, hey, this is a new thing. Just a reminder for those of your kids who have these devices, this is, you know, sort of an extraction and a highlight, if that might be something that would help, just as it's on people's minds. I don't know if that's something the superintendent would want to do.
I think some of us have already done that at the school level a little bit. When it was becoming an issue, we would parent square it out and say, hey, we're looking at these like cell phones and looking to get it into the handbook, but right now, here's the situation. We'll speak to them. If they have a recurrence, we're going to hold it. They can get it at the end of the day. If it continues, we're going to ask you to keep it at home.
Yeah, that's great, and I
I'm sorry, most of us highlight that in the back-to-school sort of information. I do the video that I send out, and I've already put that on the agenda for adding any changes to the handbook. So I think most of us will share it that way as well.
And certainly, if I do my memo to the community, I will, I will add some pieces about that as well.
Yeah, that's really Kate's point, to have like a little bulleted list of, and changes, you know, here type of thing.
Yeah, I think for some families, it's becoming more important to understand what practice, school practices, and what to expect if they're trying to reinforce on their own, you know, family level. So just pointing folks out to the policy and handbook rules is, will help educate just those, you know, those questions. So thanks.
Any other questions?
Anne Marie, not a question, but just a point of information and context for Mr. Luff. We did talk quite a while, maybe 2019, 2020, when restorative practice really started to happen at the high school first, and then at the Coakley, of wanting to have a policy around it, and we never got to that. So as we're trying to expand it more officially at the elementary level, and I'm hearing that maybe there's different ways of doing it, which is maybe okay, but then there's areas where maybe we want it to be more aligned. That may be something that, you know, Mr. Luff and Dr. Giblin and Ms. Ebbingdon, you might want to look at as a policy subcommittee.
I think we will need to look at the discipline policies to make sure that it's in there, and we can outline the restorative practices in there because it actually is a requirement prior to suspension as of last year, so we'll work through that. That's a great point, Ms. Stewart. Thank you.
Thank you. It might even be something that M A S C has, when we just haven't gotten to that piece yet. We've really tried hard to get through those M A S C updates, and being as, is part of the law that went into effect, maybe it might even be something that was coming anyway, but yeah, definitely something to look at. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the elementary handbook for 24 and 25?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, and I will poll individually. Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes four to zero. Thank you very much for joining us this evening, Ms. Ferrer and Mr. Wilson, and thank you so much for all your hard work on that. All right, so we will move to the next item on our agenda, which is the middle school handbook, and Dr. Frazek is joining us this evening to discuss that.
She is, and again, in the memo that I provided you, talks to the minor updates that are coming from Dr. Frazek, and those changes are simply the additional, purchase of additional lunches outside of the free option, food delivery to schools by outside vendors, and violations related to vaping, related to vaping. And so those can be found on pages 22 and 24, and I'm also recommending a vote to approve the middle school handbook, but I will give it to the doc to vote here.
Thank you, Dr. Luff. So yeah, just two small things because we did such a major change last year with adding all the school, adding an update on school committee policies. So the one about outside delivery, just to be really clear, does not mean parents cannot drop lunches off. It's just we don't want DoorDash. We don't want Grub Eat, any of those places, and it's a security issue, just so fewer outside places that we allow to drop off, the better off we are, and then we just add, we're starting to add a little bit more verbiage around vaping, in particular, if, you know, kind of clarifying, if you are found in a bathroom stall with other people, and one of those people has a vape, we're going to assume that you're all kind of together, so just trying to, you know, try and grapple with that issue to the best that we can. And that is pretty much it. I think the rest of it is pretty much all the same. I took my face off for a second to take a bite of pizza. You are welcome to still. Any questions for Dr. Frazek?
Anne Marie, just one question. Dr. Frazek, when we approved your school improvement plan, I know you are looking into summer sort of justice stuff and the Ron Clark Academy, right?
Yes.
But that work was looking at it this year for the next year, so it's not impacting the handbook this year, but could the following school year? Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, I think, as you mentioned before, I think looking at it district-wise, as to what restorative justice policies look like across the board, so there's certainly differences. My kiddos are a little, a little different than elementary and high school kids. But I think having sort of a district cohesion to looking at those policies together makes sense because we're, we're still in that process of learning about it and doing that piece, and certainly any of the stuff that we're looking at with the Ron Clark Academy in terms of houses and pieces like that would need to be added into the handbook, so I sense those coming within the next year or two.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions on the middle school handbook? Great. Do I have a motion to approve the middle school handbook for 24 and 25?
So moved.
I think Kate beat you to it. So Kate moved, and Teresa, second?
Sure.
Great. So I will poll individually. Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes four to zero. So thank you very much, and thank you for joining us, and have a great summer. Have a great summer to the other principals as well.
Thank you all very much.
All right, so moving on to our next agenda item is superintendent's report, and I would say not or, and late agenda item, so Mr. Luff?
Great. First of all, I just wanted to formally introduce myself to the Norwood community and let folks know, the community, how excited I am actually to be here. You know, I found myself saying that I've hit the ground running, but I think it's better to say that I've hit the ground learning, and there's a lot to learn. That said, what I have learned so far is that Norwood's incredibly vibrant community where there's an amazing amount of dedication and touring that our kids receive the best education they can. I've seen it from everyone, from the school staff, to the committee, to the parents, to all the town departments and more. I will be working with the committee on education planning soon, and that includes a more in-depth analysis, but what I do know already is that there's, we are on an extremely solid foundation, and that everyone has the focus on doing what's best for kids, and I'm really happy to be here for that. So I just want to thank you all in the community and this committee for giving me this opportunity, and for those in the community that I have not met yet, I am looking forward to working with everyone. With that, I do have an update on the summer programs as well. I'm going to share a quick slide deck, and I didn't put this in the agenda packet. There's nothing to vote on. It's just to give you kind of a a good feeling about what's going on in the program so far over the last three weeks, so I will share my screen here really quick. If I can find the right one. Okay. Can you all see my screen okay right there? All right, so just, we started about two weeks ago, and I will say, as with everything else, things get to a rocky start, especially the transportation. Everything has been ironed out since then. We run multiple summer programs. Last week was probably one of the hottest we've had in a long time. So all programs are relatively in air-conditioned space, with the exception of the Cleveland, which has fewer spaces, has like two spaces that are air-conditioned, so I worked with facilities department, and we got an extra AC to put in one of the rooms, so kids cycled through, staff members. So kids cycle through, um, staff members, um, were sure to give a lot of water to kids, uh, keep them in cool spaces and cycle them through the air conditioning spaces. So overall, the heat wave is done for now and I'm happy to know that those kids were resilient. I don't think they complained at all, um, is what I heard from all the teachers and staff. So that was really good to hear. I visited all the programs yesterday. Um, uh, Summer Matters over at Cleveland. Is a program that currently has 184 students that are going right now. They focus on academic intervention, preventing that summer slide, so to speak, and really building positive relationships. There's a lot of partnership with the Norwood Record Department and again, free breakfasts and lunches provided in all of our programs that we, that we go through. As you can see here, some of our students and all the pictures that have been taken, um, are vetted to make sure that they can be, they can be provided here. These are kids that are responding to some writing prompts, uh, rising fifth graders and writing, rising third graders doing math stations. You can see here some, um, reading literacy during stations and the shine bright in Richmond class, um, which starts off with whole body breathing to kind of add that, that activity. Here you can see some kids working on addition facts with pop-up addition games, um, some first graders illustrating short vowels. So the learning never stops in the Norwood public schools, obviously. It was really great to see over Cleveland that, um, that these programs were running the way they were. We also have ESY, Extended School Year Services Summer Program, um, that is running at the Willett Early Childhood Center, much cooler at the Willett, I will say. Uh, we have about 88 students attending all the way from rising first grade to age 22. We have a tremendous amount of staff, um, within the classrooms. And the focus there really is on social skills, English language, um, I'm sorry, ELA, math, physical activity and outside times, craft and reflection. I will say, I want to thank the community partners who, uh, CPAC and some other folks who helped us purchase some splash pads, um, uh, for the, for the, for the weeks. You'll see a common theme throughout these programs is ice cream trucks on Wednesday. I was over there yesterday and I said, you know what? I really came on the wrong day, um, because I love ice cream. There's crafts, ping pong, water balloons, um, and obviously kids here have access to Chromebooks, iPad and student accounts. As you can see here, we have some kids that are really, um, the, the dog Sally obviously came to visit. A variety of other activities occur, uh, while they're in this program. And you can see the kids are as happy as can be, um, during the summer here, mixing recreation and social activities with learning. And there's the ice cream truck. I missed it. We also have the multilingual summer academy, um, that is also at the Cleveland in the heat. We have 50 multilingual learners. They're, it's really cool. They're focusing on this project-based learning thing for the Summer Olympics. I was over there yesterday and they were making their own discus and learning all about it, um, integrating the math into those things. Looking at background knowledge and vocabulary. Kids actually selected a country to focus on, um, and they, you know, some kids chose Spain, some did France, some did Korea. Um, and at the very end of the, of the, um, summer program, there'll be an event for families to come in and the kids will orally present on their, on the countries. It's going to be a really cool thing and I'll make sure I, I get you those dates. So if you want to attend, I think that would be something that would really, really be nice to see. And they actually did duck tour trip last week, um, which was, which was really good. And you'll see here, the duck tours, we all know those boats. Um, they had a great time in Boston. And you can see here, some of the learning that they did, um, that they're, that they're working on while they're there. We also have Coakley Connects, which is a high school on the very cool and cold third floor. Now I will say, there may be a picture here of, of someone in this room and I don't know which picture it is. So you'll have to stop me so you can point, point it out. But the program director said, you know, I think, um, one of the school committee members' kids goes here, so I want to give you a picture. Ultimately though, we have 70 registered participants, uh, at Coakley Connects while working on ELA, math, social studies, STEM, drama and gym, uh, each day. Uh, they run two, two-week sessions. Um, they have incoming sixth grade groups, they have incoming seventh grade groups and incoming math, incoming eighth grade groups. It's all about engagement, peer connections, teacher connections and working collaboratively. They're learning, uh, they're, they're being introduced to the, the Coakley Middle School PBIS system and earning pride points. For being prepared, respectful, integrity, mindfulness, engagement. Again, ice cream trucks and they can use their pride points for purchases for that too, which is great. They're doing positive affirmation bracelets. I wonder if those are the SWIP bracelets or not. I'm not really sure. I didn't see those, but I'm guessing that might be. But they're doing, they're actually creating and planning out perimeter area right now and they're going to be building garden beds, um, outside. So a lot of great things that are happening there. I also engaged in conversations with the kids, uh, doing their summer reading assignments and a lot of great things happening at Coakley Connects, as you can see. So Joan, you're going to have to stop me when, when you see, but she didn't tell me which one.
I don't see him yet.
Oh, no. Okay.
Oh, that's okay. Oh, no, I do.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep. Laying on the floor.
Okay. LMPA, um, summer program, Kristen has been away this week, so I didn't get the pictures. However, um, special shout out to them, uh, who did the timing. I wasn't able to get the photo of her tonight, but they have more than 54 preschoolers in five classrooms here at Savage. I was down there yesterday morning. Uh, they were engaged. They either engage in two-day opportunities or four-day, uh, four-day opportunities and full or half-day sessions. I, I had some great, one of my favorite things to do is doing preschool morning meetings. So we get some exercise in and some good morning. Anyway, um, social skills, early literacy, math, outdoor physical activities, and again, breakfast and lunches provided. So I just wanted to give you a little update about what's going on with the summer, um, because it does not end for the kids here. JJ's been in to visit. Joe Kidd did a great job last week when, um, when JJ and I were at a conference. I'm really making sure that things are going well, um, and really proud of the programs and what's going on here so far. So just wanted to give you an update on those.
Any questions from Mr. Luff on his report? Teresa?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Luff. One thing I always try to do, uh, is make a connection to the amazing things and our budget and why we need support. Um, and I believe the majority of what you just told us we are doing, um, is funded through Title I or ESTER funding. Um, and the ESTER funding ends in September. So one of the things that we have talked a lot about as a budget subcommittee, um, and probably will need to talk about with the finance commission coming up. Is that if we want to continue to do all this amazing summer work, we will need funding to do so. Because the ESTER funding is going away and the title funding is always something that we use as much as we can, but may not be what it currently is. Is that accurate?
Yeah, we're going to bring, I'm going to have Sean, um, at our August meeting, bring you an update on the ESTER funds entirely, about what we've spent, what we still have, what we want to allocate it for. So we'll probably have that, hopefully have a budget subcommittee meeting prior to that. So we'll have those conversations. But yes, as much of this is funded through grants, um, that may or may not be available next year. So, uh, this work absolutely is dependent on the support of the community and through grants that we'll have to discuss.
Thank you. You have a question?
I will say, if I could just add, um, the, the special ed summer programming, that's a required offering. So that will not, that will not go away. We, we have to find a way to fund that regardless. So, um, I just want to make sure that all families of students receiving services over the summer know that that is not a question.
Fair point. Definitely. Kate?
Also, the preschool, is that required or that's, that's grant funded as well?
That is also a, um, uh, a program that would be required if it's in a student's individualized education.
Yeah, thanks.
Anything else on this? Okay, we can move on to the next item. Also, Mr. Luff, under late agenda. Hope you're muted.
Thank you. Uh, the next, um, request is to approve a, a position description for behavioral intervention specialist. Now, I want to tell the community and the committee that you have already approved, um, this position itself. So there are positions here. This is simply an update to the job description itself to make sure that all the revisions and renditions are now clear and approved by you. As a unitate position, um, certification requirements are now in place for this position that are flexible to allow us to have, uh, either a social worker or a counselor or a different. Criteria of, of educational degree to be able to provide these services. This particular position is, um, as has been discussed in the past, is being funded through the consolidation of two paraprofessionals. That we do, um, not have a need for at the, at this time. And nor do we believe there will be any kind of a re-request for those positions at a future date. So this will be focused at the Callahan Elementary School, as discussed already. While the other behavioral intervention specialist, um, will now cover four schools instead of the five schools. Um, and this is a general education position, uh, that will cover both, um, students with special education needs at Callahan, but also general education students and report directly to the building principal.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on the job description? Okay. Um, do I have a motion to approve the job description?
So moved.
Moved by Kate. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Teresa. Any other discussion? You guys shifted since the presentation, so I'm going to be, I'm going a lot of order. So Joan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
And MASC as well. So that passes four to zero.
Ms. Mizola, I do have one more late agenda item, just to get a, a pulse from the committee about something that I learned today, if that's okay?
Yep.
Uh, so I met with the director of recreation today, um, and you currently have an MOA with the recreation department regarding after-school, um, activities and care. That particular MOA requires that everything that was provided last year remain the same. Uh, understanding that, they understand that. They came to me today and, um, discussed wanting to pilot the ability to, uh, provide, uh, after-school care on early release days, which is something that we did not do in the past. I had two questions for them as I, as I had this conversation. Obviously, we have an MOA that we have to adapt and adjust. That is something that I will bring to you in August, but I wanted to get a pulse from you, uh, before any planning kind of went, went into this. One, uh, obviously is that I want equity among the elementary schools. I don't think it's fair if you're in one neighborhood that you get care and, um, if there's not enough staffing, for example. Uh, because many of the staff actually work for the school department. So they're, uh, thinking about two things. One is trying to have enough staff to cover, uh, all elementary schools, uh, for a certain amount of students. If they can't do that, the first elementary, the first early release day may cover two schools. And then the next one may cover another two schools and then the next one. So we would try to rotate that way. So everyone gets some after-school care on the, um, early release days. The second part of that was to make sure that there's actually available space because our staff are obviously participating in professional development during those days. So it would be continued work with the, um, principals of those schools to ensure the space was available. Uh, but ultimately anytime I hear a conversation about the availability to give more after-school care to our students in any situation is something that I, I would want to bring to you for, or request for support. So that will likely come to you in the, in the August meeting. The other piece to that is, um, uh, the before-school programs, obviously it's a challenge to, to, to get the enrollment that sometimes comes with that. So of course, what we would have done in the past, if we didn't have enough enrollment, we, we might not have that. So there is a question that if they don't have the enrollment, one, two, three kids, whatever it might be, um, that there may be a request, um, just because they can't, if they can't. They don't have enough enrollment, obviously, just like we would have, we wouldn't be running those programs either. So those two things are, are things for you to kind of stew on a little bit. Um, and if the, um, if the committee so suggests, I will, um, work with them and tell them that, um, and I would recommend this, that we at least look at the after-school early release day options. Only because they need to start planning now. Their next meeting is in August. I would bring it to you for a formal vote in August.
Yeah, and, um, I mean, I'll start the discussion that, that definitely. I don't think you're going to get a lot of, um, opposition to trying to look at half-day options. Um, and to being able to adjust our MOA to, to, to accommodate that. I think the MOA was clearly to make sure that they weren't dropping services that we provided, uh, in previous years. And, you know, obviously they'll, you know, we would have to have the discussion about the before-school options if they clearly don't have the enrollment, you know. But at the same time, like it is part of the MOA that they, they offer it because we had it in previous years. But I have certainly gone to, my children went to an elementary school where it was never offered because they couldn't staff it. So where an elementary school down the street got morning care, I had to wait until eight 40 in the morning to drop my kid off. So, um, yeah, I think the half-days is, is clearly, uh, I would please move forward with looking into that and bringing that to us in August. Has, anybody else? Any other discussion?
I wholeheartedly agree.
I'm sorry, Kate?
Oh, just, um, I think I understand this, but just to clarify, will transportation be involved? Or is, or in the case, it's meant to happen at each school. So when you were saying, if, if we can only do it at a couple of schools, we would rotate. That means that we're not looking at like bussing's not involved in getting everyone to one. Okay.
It would not, it would not be. That's, that's one of the biggest nightmare scenarios in the world, trying to get kids to different schools at different times. I think you've done that in the past before in some, some different places. And it's just like, it can be done. It's just a very hard thing to do.
Just clarifying. Thank you.
I just, I've been arguing for half-days to come back since I took them away. They meaning us, because it was under us when it went away. It, it, it got killed after, after, after COVID.
I, I will say too, that I think it's right now, the, the total cost for a maximum time is about a hundred and $10 a week. So it's a really, you know, any, any bit of money counts, right? But it's, you know, compared to other programs, it's, it's, it's very well, um, situated. They would, they, as of now, and don't, I'm not going to like put this as a promise, but I don't anticipate they're going to look at additional costs to do that either. So, um, it would be no cost if they could handle that.
Yeah, just, um, John Kenny came to our budget subcommittee in June with Anne Marie and I and Dr. Muniz and, and Mr. Wells. So I can send you those minutes, Mr. Luff, so you have them. Um, and I thought we already gave approval for this to move forward in June. I think Dr. Muniz met with all the elementary principals to identify if there were any concerns that needed to be brought forward to Mr. Kenny.
Yeah, it was the same concerns that, that Superintendent Luff brought up. It was, it was more like space, not, not the staffing, but the space, like where, like some buildings can say, if you let us know ahead of time, we have space at the buildings, however, I have that challenge. And so superintendent, um, can carry on that conversation with some of the building principals because they all want it. There was no question. They all wanted it, but it was the spacing issue.
This is just me getting caught up on things, I guess.
Yeah, um, Mr. Luff, the, the before-school, that is new. That was not brought to our attention before. I do have some concerns about that. Um, I understand what you're saying and, and why they'd be looking at it. But, um, I guess if we're being asked to revise that part of the MOA, I would like to see the data a little bit more and understand which schools are being impacted.
Yeah, I don't know if that's going to be an issue. I really, I really don't. I just think we talk overall about kind of how the MOA is written. And right now, if there was no enrollment, they, they would suffer on a program. You know what I mean? So it's, it's one of the, it's one of those things. And I, I just know as long as I'm having the conversation with them too, there's no chance that we're reducing any programs or, or time for after-school or before-school care.
This is an if, if situation. They just kind of want us to discuss like if they got one kid enrolled, you know. I don't know if that'll be the case. Uh, it has become pretty popular since my kids were doing before and after, but, um.
Yep. And I'll also probably bring you some communication, some language around communication. So for example, if, you know, Johnny's having a hard day, right, during the day, how can that be communicated to the program? Because prior, they were our staff and it's very easy to say they're our staff, so we communicate that. So some kind of a communication channel with parental, um, obviously consent to make sure that they know how to, um, uh, address any, um, dysregulation or things that come up during the day. So I might add something along, along there too, for your, for your review.
Yeah, that'd be very much appreciated. There was supposed to be a handbook that was written and then approved by the superintendent for that reason. So that would be amazing if that is followed through on.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Luff?
Uh, no, that is it for me.
Great. Great. So we can move on to the next agenda item. We are going to move on to budget. And Mr. Will, you give us the budget subcommittee update, please?
I will. We don't have too much of an update, but you have in your pocket a copy of our draft minutes from our last subcommittee meeting on July 8th. Anne Marie and I, Mr. Luff, Mr. Mannion, um, and then also our FinCom liaison, Sarah Sullivan, was in attendance part of it. This was really just a introductory, hey, how are we going to work together? Let's try to catch Tim and Sean up on a little bit. There's a lot to catch up on. Um, and let's start to plan the work ahead. Um, we spent some time, um, just going over some of the items that Mr. Wells had brought to my attention at the end of June. Just to make sure that, um, our new superintendent and new assistant superintendent of finance and operations had the same information. We identified some things that Mr. Mannion's going to be working on. I believe, Mr. Luff, you had identified just a few minutes ago that Mr. Mannion's going to be bringing, um, the fourth quarter end of year report, um, from FY24 to us at our August meeting. So we will have a lot more data and numbers to dive into then. We also spent some time just talking about the budget balancing committee. So Anne Marie and I will stay a part of the BBC. Maya Bodenhofford is now the chair of BBC for this next fiscal year. We have been trying to get some summer meetings on the books. That hasn't happened yet. Hopefully we will meet as a BBC again in August. Um, and then we are meeting again as a sub. And then we are meeting again as a Subcommittee, August 20th, to give Mr. Mannion and Mr. Luff some time to figure things out. But you can see the copy of the minutes in the packet. If there's anything that anybody has questions on specifically, please let us know.
Mr. Luff?
I absolutely failed to introduce Sean Mannion, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, to the community. Sean comes to us from many years in Newton as the person who did their finances. And Sean is an incredible flexible thinker with some really great operational skills, and we're really excited to have him in Norwood, along with JJ, to build out what's gonna be a fantastic team for us, I think. So welcome, Sean.
Thanks a lot. Hello, everyone.
Welcome aboard.
I'm excited.
We're excited too. We're excited to have a full team ready to go hitting the ground running, because that's what you guys have had to do. Anything else for Budget Subcommittee? We could, any questions, concerns? Okay, all right, we'll move on to the next item under Budget, which is the Capital Outlay Update. So I'll get that one going. You'll see in your packets that there are three pieces of information from the Capital Outlay Meeting that we had last Monday on the 15th. That was in the FinCom Room. So the three pieces of, the three documents that you have in there are a memo from Mr. Mizuko about the current projects. I won't go into all these, obviously, because they're not school-related, so in the interest of time, I'll just, just, they're in there for your information. So there was a memo on the status of the current capital projects that have been approved to date. There obviously is the agenda for the Capital Outlay Meeting, and there's also a slideshow, which shows the FY25 Capital Improvement Plan, so the plan that they'd like to bring forward into the special town meeting this fall for approval, excuse me. So obviously, I would draw your attention to the one item that the schools are looking to put forward in the fall. So normally, we bring our items forward in the spring because of, you know, usually their technology items, and they can get that over the summer. The E-rate is, you know, in the spring, so that is something we usually, we usually kind of a few little background for, you know, Mr. Luff and Mr. Mannion, we actually used to do all of our capital outlay in the, in the spring. Everything was in the spring with the, with the special and annual town meeting, and the town management decided, government decided that that was really strenuous, stressful, confusing for town meeting members. There were all these annual town meeting things in the budget to approve, and, and then many nights of hang, you know, haranguing over a lawnmower. So there's, and, and we say that tongue-in-cheek, but it's, you know, the common person can, you know, wrap their head around a lawnmower a lot more than they can around, you know, a fire engine. So there was a lot more, you know, discussion around lawnmowers. But the government, town government decided to move the Capital Outlay Request and Process to the fall. We did not follow, because most of, like I said, is IT, IT request, and that is falling with the E-rate calendar, and so we still, and obviously, schools being closed over the summer, we still needed our things to come in the spring. So for those of us here, we are actually putting forward something into the Capital Outlay Request for the fall. It's coming from the Transportation Department, and it is to replace the five, the five small buses, the five mini-buses that we currently have in our fleet. And I'm one of the reasons, and Mr. Luff can certainly back me up with more details, but that Mr. Bishop felt like they needed to be replaced now, because they are failing. And also, the ordering cycle on these can be pretty lengthy, so needing to get it, get them in now, so that they can get into the order queue and hopefully get here in FY25, probably. So our effort, yeah, it's, it's just one of those things. So that was pretty much it. Our next meeting is actually, we just got it today, is gonna be scheduled for August 19th. It's gonna be a little bit of a show-and-tell, where we're gonna have a meeting after we go and look at some fire trucks and things like that. I will not be able to attend. I will actually be down the Cape that week. I know that Mr. Luff is planning and/or Mr. Mannion is gonna be administration presence at that meeting. Did I miss anything?
Sean and I will both be there at that meeting. Just that FY25, likely not. So they're 12 to 18 months, as far as ordering goes, from start to finish, which is why Mr. Bishop really wanted to move this through, and they're, they're needed. There was a conversation, and there will be more conversations, about making sure that we're planning these mini-bus replacements out over the, and spreading them out over the capital plan over the years, similar to how we have the, the small band, which are different, spread out over the capital plan, which actually is funded in the operating anyway, but that's a kind of a different, different story. But so we're gonna make sure that we're strategically planning these things, so we're not giving the town a big hit as we, as we make these requests for the future.
Yeah, that was pretty much the only question, and it was, it was not, not in opposition, just why all at once, and, you know, the explanation, obviously, we ordered them all at once in the first place, we're kind of now stuck in the cycle, so how do we think ahead and not have that happen? But there was no real opposition or, you know, gasps from the, from the Capital Outlay over our request. But that's it? Yes, Teresa?
A few questions. So if we bring you forth that request, when are we voting on it as a school committee?
So I can tell you what, I put in the calendar all of the different dates for the, when things have to go for the special town meeting.
Right, and I think they're due by August 9th, and we don't meet before that again.
Correct. Fall special town meeting articles are due. I have the 7th, but I think it might be the, I think it might actually be the 9th, because I think it said the 7th, but I think it was a typo. Yeah, so this would be one of those ones that was a little bit out of cycle. And we probably could have put it on for today, and that is an oversight.
And then also related to what needs to go on fall town meeting warrant. The parking lots, so some of the parking lots got put on hold, the Savage, and I forget which other one. Is that coming back up around? Do we need to vote on that again?
I don't know that we need to vote on it again, because we didn't, I don't know, I mean, I don't know, honestly, if we need to, because we did vote on it before, it just got postponed by the Capital Outlay, so we approved it. That is back on the list to get the Savage done. I think it might not be in this specific set of documents that I gave you. There was one more that we had.
Page eight in FY25 Capital Improvement Plan.
Is it there?
Yep.
Yeah, so the Savage is back on the list. I think they had initially intended for it to be paired up, if I remember from last year, with a different school, but those two have been pushed out now to FY25. So what I'm missing in these documents that I can get to you, that we had in the meeting, was a paper copy of the, like, five-year plan. But that is not here, but I can get that and scan it in and put it into the, into the folder. But yeah, so that the Savage would go this year. We did already vote on it as a committee last year, so I guess if we wanted to just, you know, make it formalized, we could, we could vote on it. And then the other two parking lots have been pushed to FY25.
Okay, yeah, if we could see the updated five-year plan from facilities, I think that would be helpful. And then I know there was a lot of discussion when this was postponed before of some FinCom members saying, well, we're not gonna do any parking lots until we know what's going on with the elementary study. Obviously, we're still in the process of the elementary study. I know there's gonna be an update in today's meeting, but is that something that came back up, that they still wanna delay parking lot?
No one mentioned that. I think, I mean, elementary study or not, the Savage parking lot is in rough shape, and I don't think that building's going anywhere. So it's gonna be in use for, you know, and plus, we have tenants, we, you know, we rent that building out, like, it's, it's kind of one of the ones we can't keep delaying. There's also some stormwater, one of the reasons they wanted to delay it was because they want to include some stormwater improvements and drainage into the plan, so that was another piece of it that we get, you know, lots of issues with the grading of that and like the runoff. So I think there is a, an additional layer of wanting to get that parking lot done, so that they can put those improvements in. So there was no question about that. No one brought that up in the meeting, that they wanted to delay based on elementary study. I mean, I can share the parking lots, like, but that's two years out, so I don't think anybody was really thinking about that.
Okay, that's not, it wasn't my argument.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
And then one other question on Capital Outlay. I saw on the Board of Selectmen meeting, I think last night, they reviewed, I didn't, I didn't watch the meeting, but I saw on their agenda, they reviewed and voted on an updated capital improvement policy. Is that something that's supposed to be coming to the school committee as well?
Yes, and, and, and at the, and I didn't, I didn't have it enough time to get it. I, I probably had enough time to get in the packet, but it, I had a paper copy, and I didn't get it into the packet. But yes, we, there is one, I'll make sure that is in, I had intended for the August one, I don't know why, I didn't think that I couldn't get it in for this one, because it, I had just enough time, but I had already had it in my brain that we were gonna do it at the August meeting. So yes, you'll, that will be coming to you.
Okay, thank you.
And I can share that sooner rather than later, because I do have it, so I can, as soon as possible, can, I can, I can send it to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I lost my, there we go. Too many tabs open, lost the agenda. All right, so moving right on to the next item, under Old Business, we have Ms. Sibing Dunn, Mr. Luff, give us an update on the elementary study.
You want me to kick it off? Kate?
I'm gonna, I'd love to just hand it off to you for the meat of the presentation or the update. I just wanted to thank, just briefly thank the principals that have been participating in the working group through, from January through the spring. Brian Riley, Diane Ferrera, and Michael Ballier were key to working with our consultants and providing data that we needed to help them get us to this sort of, through the first phase. So I wanted to thank them for being really reliable during a time of a lot of transition for the district. So I just wanted to thank them and say to, to what Tim will update, that we had a working group meeting on July 19th, where we sort of talked about Phase Two, where it will, things will appropriately be handed off to our new Superintendent, and where he will lead us into the next sort of deep dives, second phase of the project. So, thank you again.
Thank you. So obviously, we met, as we discussed, and you know already that we provided a survey to the community and the staff, Google Survey. We've received about 49 community responses and 23 staff member responses as of the date of that meeting. I have not checked since that date, and that was the 19th. We'll continue to take feedback through the Google Survey until the forums, the forums are held in September. At that time, I'm hoping to kick off a thought exchange at those forums with the families and the staff members that are there. As you know, and you, as you saw at the last meeting, Thought Exchange allows you to have an exchange of ideas. So you can generate concerns, different kind of feedback, and then those, those concerns or that feedback can be rated by other members that are participating in that exchange. There are also these, these kind of cyber interviews that you can do, cyber interviews that you can do with, with different communities to get even more feedback. It takes all of it, and it analyzes it for us, and it puts it into a great kind of objective data set, but also then uses AI to give you some, some feedback on some recommendations. And AI is not perfect, so we're not gonna use that for everything, but it does give you some good themes that we'll use. I will also say that after speaking with Thought Exchange folks, they'll be able to take all the Google Survey data and feed it into the Thought Exchange, so we'll have one good data set. And as you've seen, Thought Exchange allows translated surveys as well. So families will be able to translate, exchange ideas back and forth in, in their, in their language. So we'll, we'll hopefully do that. One of the other things that we're gonna do here is, I'm gonna create some videos, hopefully within the next two weeks, talking about the actual three models, and talking about the, the kind of what, what they mean, what they look like, processes that we're gonna follow, all those kind of things. And so I'll get that out as a kind of a welcome to the community, but also here's something that you're seeing, you're hearing, to really have the community get a better understanding of what we're talking about. I want everyone in the community to know that I don't think that we should make any decision and lean any way until we have all the community feedback and the staff feedback on this. I think it's just not, it's not time to do that until we have that feedback. And that feedback, by the way, is also gonna be from us, as I work with our Transportation Department and facilities, and the different stakeholders over the next two, three, four weeks as well, to look at each individual model and identify those issues that could come up, whether it be transportation, whether it be special ed purposes, and all those different things that could, could get in the way, because I think that when I come to you with a process timeline, you'll need to know those things too, and what the impacts are for those timelines. Having said that, when I come to you in October, I think it's October, right, yeah, right after the forums are done, I'm gonna be asking you for a vote on the instructional model. Right? What kind of instructional model do you want to have? Is it gonna be a, you know, are you interested in the K to four model, right? And, and those are the kind of questions that I want, that I want to have. I am not gonna ask you for a vote on timeline at that point, because once we know what the model is, what works for all kids, right, what you think is best for all kids, then we'll start looking at the feasibility of whether, how it could be staffed, what the special ed programs might look like, what transportation might look like, and then really see if we can actually, if it's feasible to, to put that into place, this, for FY26, along with the COLE change. It might not be. It might not be at all. So we really need to evaluate that and get the vote on the educational model first, and then I'll come back to you with recommendations for timelines shortly after that. And it might be that I recommend no changes until FY27. I don't, I don't know yet, and I think community feedback, really good understanding of what each model means to the community and to us, and to budget, and all those pieces are gonna be really important first. So that said, I have no request for an action tonight. More will come, and I'm just hoping that, that we're focusing on the teaching and learning of students as we look at the model, and not just the operational stuff that might come, come along with it. And then include special education, I will say that out loud. I think that if we're, if we're focusing the changes on, on special education, I think that's probably a little backwards, only because our educational model should support all kids, and our focus should be to include all kids. And then we will appropriately modify and change and move programs, and whatever we have to do based on the educational model that you decide on. And I'll also bring that to you after the vote for the educational model's done. Like, everything, everything, Kate, I think I did.
Yeah, I think you, you covered it in terms of really framing, you know, what our vote is about in October, and that the operational things will stem from the work that you're doing now and through the beginning of the school year, which is really important to understand the big picture and work with all of the relevant teams and departments, that so that you have a grasp as to how that would roll out. I'm sure my colleagues may have some clarifying questions, so I can help where, I'm happy to help where I can.
And just to the community, again, this decision is not made, we're gonna wait for the feedback from, from everyone before we make any decision. And those of you that have provided feedback so far, thank you very much. It's valuable, and it'll be, it'll be reflected in the conversation.
I did just want to say, before Teresa asks, we, the FAQ document will be, continue to be updated, the survey is open, but Tim kind of alluded to this, in the fall, we will re-engage. We have, again, just to remind people, there's a public forum for the community, there's gonna be a staff listening session, and we will also be doing more messaging to remind people, including what Superintendent Luff mentioned, which I think is a great idea to bring some video explainers about some of this. So definitely more communication as people come, you know, start to exit summer and re-engage. Teresa?
Teresa, yeah. I couldn't find them, you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kate, for your ongoing work. Thank you, Mr. Luff, for jumping in. Just a clarifying question. You were saying you were gonna have more information on the three models. When you said the three models, do you mean those three scenarios that are all K through four?
There is a zero model, that's no changes. There's, and there's the one, and there's the two that are both K through four. So two models are K through four, and one is, is status quo. Those are the models that I was, that you had already vetted, that looked at, that came out of the, the recommendations from, from the committee.
Okay. And I don't know if you're ready to speak to this tonight, or if this will come up at another meeting, but as you're doing all of that really important work, how are you aligning that with the decisions of the five-through-eight COLE, and also the Student Services Audit?
Well, the Student Services Audit is coming up. I have to have a conversation with, with Ms. Amano about that. That's gonna come up in the next two weeks, a conversation. You're gonna probably hear a recommendation from me to break out the Student Service Audit into a special ed section, into a Student Service ELO section, into different things like that. So that's, that's on my radar in the coming weeks. So that's that's on my radar in the coming weeks. As far as the move to COGLE, we are opening COGLE, right? So that is that is a primary thing. So we're going to be looking at staffing, obviously, and staffing changes. I don't know what that looks like yet. It's different if we decide to have to move on the elementary in the elementary study changes in the same year. So there's there's those things. We've had conversations with the principals and they're doing a great job really considering budgetary impacts, what we need to do to make sure we maintain and have a good, successful opening of COGLE. So those conversations will continue to happen, and they're all kind of falling into place together. And so it's many moving parts as one one wheel together. So we'll come back to you with probably recommendations and conversations about all three as we as we as we talk about this.
And if I could just ask a process question to you, Mr. Love, and also Anne Marie to you. A lot of the previous analysis discussion of the middle school staffing had happened within the Budget Subcommittee, and I'm not saying it happens needs to happen there. But what is the best way to transfer information from what Anne Marie and I were really diving into? And then also, the School Committee has taken some votes previously on models and expectations for the COGLE that we may need to revisit. So what is the best way to work with you on all of that?
Well, I think first is to get me those. So as I make recommendations, I don't overstep on what School Committee has already made decisions on. And as I review them, I if there's something in there that I say, whoa, this is something that needs to come back to you for a different recommendation of sorts, I will do that. Otherwise, I will work with the confines of what the School Committee has made recommendations. And obviously, the community has supported in the opening of COGLE.
And then just to my colleagues as well, since we're trying to recalibrate and have some new protocols in place. So as like Budget Chair, a lot of that had fallen under me. So should I convey that information directly to Superintendent Love or what are we asking or looking for?
I think is the norms of, I'm sorry, Joe, go ahead.
Excuse me, I was going to say, I believe our new protocols were that Subcommittee Chairs would communicate directly with Superintendent Love.
Agreed. Okay. I can definitely do that, just making sure as we are transitioning.
I think it makes more sense. It just decreases the middleman and yep.
Yeah, and I want to be able to speak to the chairs about respective committee work. So absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right. Anything else on the elementary study update? Thank you very much for that. Okay, so we'll go on to our next item on the agenda. And this is Dr. Munoz is going to talk to us about the family liaison job description.
Thank you, Chairman Zola. This is the family job liaison description that we had been previously talking about in the in the FY twenty four school year that never was brought to School Committee. And so we were able to pull a job description, revise it, take a look at it and bring it forward to you guys now. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
And can I just quickly add this particular position, which is a great position, as so long as it can be funded, right? So I want to be clear, this is an approval of a job description. This does not mean that we're going to create the position or have the position until we know we've identified the funding to do so.
Thank you for that clarification. Any questions or discussion on the job description in our packets?
Just to what Superintendent Love just said, so this is just sort of ready to go for funding that we are currently pursuing. Like we are wanting.
Yes, yes, this is this is grant funded stipulations. And so we have some grant funds set aside for this year, but we are going to continue to reevaluate our funding and see what we can add moving forward.
So our approval will just be.
Just the job.
Sorry.
Just the job.
Does that mean to clarify that it comes back to us when the funding is identified for execution or we're approving this and the ability for that hire to happen?
I think what will come back to you is and probably through the Budget Subcommittee first, to be honest, is we're going to be coming to you with grants and ideas of what we're spending those grants on. And so this is one in particular that I think we would come and say, hey, we have this grant fund and that fund will be used for one or two or three positions, depending on what that is. And it will come to the School Committee for approval as well, to understand.
Understood. Thank you.
Joan?
When I had initially looked at this, I understood this to be connected to the SOA plan that we had approved. Is this the same? Is that the grant funding that you're talking about?
Yeah, we never had a job description before from this. I asked and and speaking to some of you guys, you guys, we never saw job descriptions, so then therefore we pulled it, yeah.
I just I wanted to make sure that I was making the connection correctly.
Teresa?
Yeah, I was going to ask about the connection to the SOA plan. And then in there, Dr. Munoz, and I understand Mr. Love and Mr. Mannion, maybe things are changing. But at the time, and like, when did we talk about the SOA plan? Many times, March through June. I know, like, I kept asking about the budget and we were trying to identify sources. And I believe we said we are looking at Essar and Title III. Is that correct?
Yeah, we had Essar and Title III, and then we also had the one-time payment from DESI for chronic absenteeism.
Right, which was ten thousand, correct?
Yeah.
So when we were talking about this job description and what this would look like, we are originally talking about like Unit A, it'd be added on to teachers and one per school. But this job description is very different. So if we could just clarify, why are we shifting? I'm not against the shift, but I'm just trying to understand.
I can start with Unit A piece, actually, just in in conversations with 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 the unit. This is not a licensed required licensed position. And so it doesn't fit in the Unit A. Is it a contract bargaining unit? And they weren't agreed with that. So we went with an individual contract for more flexibility. But Dr. Munoz, I think you can add the other part of that question, I think. It was on the part.
Teresa, what was the question again?
Yeah, so just wondering, like, from Unit A and then rather than a stipend, because we were talking about maybe looking at stipends. So it wouldn't be a stipend, it would be an hourly individual contract as long as the grant funding comes through. Am I understanding correctly?
Yes, yes. And and we looked at past practice of how we actually had some family liaison work done, and this is mirroring the past practice. And so that's kind of what we.
Joan?
Okay, so now that I've established that it was these, this is the same position as the as we were talking about for the SOA. I understood the SOA position when you were presenting it to involve going to families' homes. I do not read this job description in that same way. And so I just I want to make sure that, and I'm fine with that, because I was one of the people who was uncomfortable with hiring folks to go to people's homes. Am I correct in my assessment of this current job description? That's the first.
We revisited some things and looked at some things and made sure that we were we 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 just had more people around it to look at it and gave it some thought. And so we just found other things that we felt were higher priority for the family liaison to 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 do as a job to help support the relations with relationship between homes and schools.
Great, great. I'm much more comfortable with this job description than I am with what was presented with SOA. My only other question is is we've had a request from our attorney that for new job descriptions, they be reviewed. Did this use our template or was this reviewed by her?
So I I do not know. Oh, go ahead. I just didn't know the answer to that because this was a ongoing thing.
I Melissa hasn't seen it from from my from my standpoint. So but we're than happy to to talk to Tim and see if she can get her eyes.
Or or use the template that she provides for job descriptions. Just we've run into trouble in the past with job descriptions not aligning with certain things. So I just want to get us in the habit for new, and this is a brand new job of making sure that we're either using the template she provides or she's had eyes on it. So.
And you had mentioned that in the past, Joan, so I will I will do that for these for these ones.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to add on to Jones also, it was in tandem with contracts, making sure job descriptions and contracts align. So if you have not yet made a template individual contract, that should definitely have her eyes on it.
All of the contracts that you are seeing from here on out are based off of her template.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
And I was muted. Any other discussion?
I I think the shifts and changes that you guys made, I think this looks like a great, strong job description. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Great. And if I could just ask about the process, so we approved this tonight. And then within the job description, it says one to three positions contingent upon grant funding. So Mr. Love is the goal to post this and see who applies. And then at the same time, also figure out what's going on with the grants.
I think I think it's kind of kind of be a dual thing like that. Yeah, I think we'll post. Now, it also says that, you know, it may change based on the number of applicants, right? So if we get like one applicant that wants that can do twenty hours a week and that's, you know, we don't have anybody else, it'll still be that hourly rate, but the the job description gives the flexibility to actually make those changes. If we can only find one person or if we find eight that can only work two hours a week, you know what I mean? So but it's really the rate there that's that's important. The salary ranges are just from the lowest of the the hours, ten hours at forty to the highest at at fifty on one base, obviously, on one hundred and eighty three, thirty six weeks and one based on fifty two weeks.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the job description for the family liaison.
Moved by Teresa, do I have a second? I think I saw Joan seconding.
Second.
Don't, don't, don't mute because my children, your tiles, no, your tiles got shifted. So I'm going to roll call on your first. So Joan.
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes four to zero. Thank you for working on that and bringing it back multiple times, tabled back, tabled back. It looks great. All right, so we will move on to new business. So the first item under new business is a long-term agenda review. This, again, is supposed to just be a really quick update. Make sure there's no like major outstanding things that we need to discuss in person. But just a reminder that the long-term agenda is is linked here. Please do go in and make comments, things that need to go in, obviously, as policy Subcommittee starts meeting. And we need to, you know, add policy in, specific things in here, let's do that. Budget, I see Teresa has made a lot of comments. Thank you. I have not gone through them all yet, but several of them are are well received because there were things that I had forgotten about myself. So is there anything in here, actually specifically, Teresa, is there anything we need to discuss tonight that we we need to get like immediate?
Yeah, there are just a couple, just a couple of items that Anne Marie, you and I through budget. And just to acknowledge, like, our Budget Subcommittee through all the transition of the last year had became like an operational Subcommittee, which should have never happened. So I acknowledge that as I bring some of these things up, right? Like, hey, we are working on it. What's going on? But there were a number of things that we were working on with Dr. Munoz and Mr. Wells, and I just want to make sure we don't forget. So the extended day MOU that Mr. Love already identified, I had put in here. We will also need Mr. Mannion's help in looking at the extended day revolving fund to make sure all bills were paid, payroll was played paid, and we can close that out because I believe that money has to go on the town meeting ball warrant article for a town meeting to appropriate whatever is left in our revolving fund to the Rock Center. So we need to make sure we close ours out and we paid all our bills. So we had said we would check up on that in August. We still haven't finished the shared cost allocation agreement. And along with that was the process and decision making around compensated absences. And those are two items that impact the budget for FY twenty five that we've started. So, Tim, I'm happy to like talk to you more about that as the as the Budget Chair, but we should probably figure out how we want to try to move those things along.
Yeah, maybe you and Sean and I could sit down and actually have a meeting and talk about that.
That'd be great. Okay, and then just as a reminder, Anne Marie, we paused the review of the Joint Facilities MOU, just how much was going on. So we should have our eyes on that this summer.
Yeah, I just saw that and I was like, oh, okay.
Yeah. And then I think the other thing I was just in June, when Eli Norris came and talked to us about food services, him and Mr. Wells had identified that we do need to revisit. Even though it's free meals, we still need to vote on a new mail rate because it impacts something, a reimbursement or something. And we were supposed to do that by the end of the summer as well. So those are the things that I called out for the next meeting. And then I just made some comments and questions that you can look at for the rest of the year.
And I have a few questions for the committee as well, if I could on on this. So my NISP coach, this coach will be present at that meeting. I'm supposed to have a draft entry plan done for them on August sixth, so this is going to be great. I'm like, it's good, and then bring it to you by the end of August while he's there. His name is John Phelan, by the way, he's a former superintendent in Belmont. So I'm actually happy with the with the coach that I landed. But I also, obviously, we need to have a conversation about my goals as well. So I didn't know if that is something with the goals that you normally do in a in the in a business meeting or you do that in a other, not executive session, obviously, but a more of an informal meeting. So that's a question that I have for you folks, how you want to do that.
Yeah, so we actually were discussing this earlier. Teresa and I about just making sure that we were in line because with the the coach coming that day, I didn't know if we wanted to wait until after that. So we had some maybe just some guidance or maybe there's some, you know, we want to make sure we're doing it right as well. I know we have what MASC tells us that we need to do, but we also want to be in alignment across the board with, you know, obviously, this coach that we've, you know, hired to make sure that you're, you know, onboarded appropriately and with the MASC. So I'm wondering if we at that time maybe assign this. So what we usually do is have a Subcommittee or, yeah, a Subcommittee of of two members work with the Superintendent to put together those goals and then bring them back to us. So I don't know if August twenty seventh to September eleventh is enough time. But I was, I think my thought process would be to assign those two committee members at the August twenty seventh meeting, work with you over the the couple of weeks between the two meetings, and then have those goals ready for the eleventh. Does that seem like too short of a timeline?
I think that that works for me. I mean, I'll have a draft prior, you know what I mean, anyway. The big question is, how extensive are you going to want me to change the kind of a thing, you know, over those two weeks? But if not the eleventh, I think we'll hear more on the twenty seventh about, you know, what the process that, you know, NIS envisions. I mean, if we have to move to the twenty fifth, we move to the twenty fifth, right? But I think we can shoot for the the eleventh.
And then
the eleventh.
And Teresa, you've obviously been involved in a lot more of these than me in a lot of years. What am I missing about the choosing the? So, yeah, I guess that's in the past, we would have chosen the gone through the DESI rubric and chosen the different, you know, areas that we wanted to focus on. So I don't know, again, we want to be in alignment with what NIS is also thinking. And if that's something that we need to do in this first year or, you know, how that works exactly. So I guess that's where I kind of was with not having that conversation too early.
Where you are, okay.
Yeah, just chime in. Am I thinking that's that's correct, right?
Yeah, what I believe is there's supposed to be two to three goals for a first year Superintendent. One of the goals is the entry plan. And then you still go through the DESI rubric, you pick out your standards, like what every standard, right? What ties to the goals? And then you pick some of the indicators, not every indicator. You have supposed to have no more than nine. And then what we'll need to determine as a school committee, like we've done with previous, you know, with Dr. Thompson, is what is the evidence that we're looking for? We want to, you know, vote on that. Remember, it's supposed to be like smart, specific and timely and measurable and all of that. And then what we also need to do is determine the evaluation cycle. So we know in the fall, when are we planning to do the evaluation? And then there's also a six-month check-in. It's not like written, but a six-month check-in that we have to schedule. And then the other thing with Mr. Love's contract is the three hundred and sixty degree assessment tool. We need to figure out how we're going to utilize that. I would recommend we figure that out in the fall, so that way we're all on the same page going into all the goals and the evaluation cycle.
And I put that in February twelfth, based on the contract. It was because it was had to be done in February, so that that I think is gathering that data. Not necessarily evaluating it, but at least gathering the data. So I'm all for having conversations in the fall about how all of this looks. And just so you all know too, is that, you know, when we do our Ad Council Retreat coming up here at the end of August, I will be working with them on trying to prioritize those things that are important in the schools that they really want to work on based on what the current strategic plan is, things they want to move forward with. So you're going to hear some of my feedback coming from them, right, of those things that they're doing too. So I should have some good things, not the best, going to be the only thing that I'm working on or that we're working on. But you will have an idea from the principals too about what their and and department heads, what their focuses are. So that'll all come to you at that point. And just to be clear, the entry plan is now coming to you in August. The process that I'll use to complete the entry plan will be coming to you in August.
Yes, right. Okay. I think that sounds like a reasonable plan moving forward. And I think that we have the the dates on there as we just discussed already. So we can always, we can ship things, you know, if you're right, if goals need to shift, you know, to the vote, the final vote just up twenty fifth, then that's fourteen days, it's not going to break the bank, as they say. Teresa, anything else on here that you aren't that you had comments on that need? Teresa, anything else on here that you aren't, that you had comments on that need to be discussed tonight?
No, the rest is just kind of longer term, as you and Mr. Luff continue to work on it.
I actually do have one more question. This was all about. So there was a handbook that was created, a handbook that was created. And I'd planned on updating that and making sure it was available for staff. I guess my question for the committee is, have you often approved the staff handbook, which is obviously an operational handbook, based on what your, what your policies are for, for staff? So I guess that's a question for you, because my plan was to actually make sure it was accurate, followed your policy, and I could get it out to all the staff before the beginning of the year.
So we've only had one staff handbook, and that was called to our attention in the policy audit that we did with MASC, that we needed one. We were told by MASC, the school committee is supposed to approve it. We approved it last October. It was unfortunately never implemented. I, I think we should see it again if it's being changed from what we previously approved, but that's my perspective.
Okay, so in that case, I would like it to be on the 27th. So you approved one last August. Okay, so what I, what I think, the reason I'm questioning all of this, and I will bring it back to you, is that we're up, we're going to be implementing ARCSED, which is the mid, the annual training for staff. And the handbook will be placed right in there as a link. So when everybody does their annual training, they're gonna have to go in the handbook and they're gonna have to read it there. So for those new hires, when we get this thing started, and many will be doing it after the 27th, so likely you'll have your approval by then, and it'll be updated in there. But I may put the one that you had already approved in there just to get started before that. If that's okay with you, because you've already approved it, or I assume last year until, till this year, that that will be okay.
I think that makes sense. Are, are you anticipating major changes, or?
No, no. I mean, once it's done, most of the updates are things like, okay, we're changing Title IX processes, right?
Right.
You know, if FMLA changes, we're modifying the FMLA language, right? Or if there's a, you know, new administration, we, you know, it would update, say, you know, Tim and Sean now, right? And those, those kind of things. You know, any, any law changes, typically the things that happen. Ultimately, they're, they're, they're very, they're very similar to what you've probably already approved. So if the committee is okay with logistical changes, like minor changes, like names, I could do that. And then bring the whole thing for you for approval again on the 27th.
Emery, yes, I, I think logistical changes make sense. It, it was just the start of a handbook. It wasn't completely finished. And we were told it was going to be continued to be, like, worked on and evaluated. When we did the policy audit, there were a lot of policies in Section G that we were advised should not be policies, but rather go in handbook. And then there was an extensive review of all the different union contracts. So there's a lot of work that started, but didn't fully finish.
Okay. Well, I, I will, I will finish it. You'll have it finished in the next few weeks. So.
Thank you.
All right. Any other? I just added staff handbooks to the 27th to LTA. Any other discussion on this before we move on? And of course, this will continue to be worked on. There are a couple of comments here, like we just, like I just mentioned. So policy, as you have mapped it, when you map out, you know, policies.
Yeah, just a general, yeah, to your point, we, we just kind of have to do a, a sort of a reorienting for policy since with, you know, sort of a resetting. So after that, we'll be able to fill in on the, the long-term agenda as well. Give you manager expectations of what to expect.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Just a, a quick aside, I don't know if you saw the email that came out today that they have finally updated MASC policies around Title IX.
Oh, I know. That's kind of something.
Yeah.
They did. And I, everybody gets that, right? Is everybody signed up on the MASC listserv? Like, I know Teresa's, Joan, do you get them? Okay. And, Tim, I'm assuming you get?
I do. I get, I get. Yep. And I will say, too, Melissa's gonna come to our Ad Council training and do an updated training for our administrators on Title IX. I have her coming in for now. So.
Wonderful.
Another thing I would put on my radar, and I called it out in the long-term agenda, but I know we're still wrapping up other negotiations. However, we do have to get ready to start negotiating on Union 50.
That is on my radar, Teresa, so we have that. That's, that's, I will work with you guys, too, on getting this.
Wasn't that just yesterday?
That way.
My side of the committee is just being like a whirlwind.
Sean and I also added a few items that we're gonna have to go up a bit on this year as well. I think, and Sean, the other one was, I forget, is it food service?
Food service is here?
Yeah.
Yeah, they usually come at the same time.
Food service and transportation, right?
Yeah. All right, perfect. All right, so that was way more than five minutes, but was useful, useful. But moving on. So the next item on the agenda, we are going to table until the next meeting for the Food Services Association contract approval. So we will move on to the next item, which is MOA with Unit B, also going to be tabled until the next meeting. So maybe we have plenty of time to work on. So then the next one is a job description for a confidential secretary slash ELL slash nursing secretary for Mr. Luff.
Yeah, so what you have in front of you is a position that reports actually both the superintendent of schools and the school committee chair. That has been updated and modified based on conversations that we've had. This particular position is currently a part-time position that is working for the school committee in terms of responsibilities around the board work. And Lisa Liff is currently in this position. You've had previous discussions about making this position a full-time position. This job description does that. We have found the funding in, in higher-down savings to be able to support this position for FY25. It will also assist in our ELL department and nursing department as the number of students requiring ELL services and the logistics behind that, as well as the nursing have grown. So there is plenty for this position to do and support. I will also say that through the consolidation of a few of the other paraprofessionals and positions that we have done, this does not impact any benefits that the town already provides. So we are, for example, if we consolidate two positions into one, we saved a benefit package that now is being used for this position. And Sean and I are tracking those as we go, so we don't go over the number that we've been allocating.
Any questions on the job description in our packets this evening?
No, thank you for, thank you for working on this, as the committee knows, we've been talking about it for a while. So I'll make a motion to approve the updated job description for the confidential secretary for MPS, school committee, ELL, and nursing.
I have a second, seconded by Kate. All right, any other discussion? I'll poll Joan.
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes four to zero. Thank you very much for that. Okay, so move right on to the next item. Also, Mr. Luff, this is for the MOA with Unit C.
I think we are moving that one as well.
Oh. Are we moving that one?
Have you decided to table that one?
Did we table?
Uh, no, we voted.
Yeah. Where we moved Unit B, but we said we, we would, we approved Unit C and.
So this particular memorandum agreement is with the Unit C. We have an associate principal in Unit C, and this is agreeing to the increase by 3% for FY25. In which case, this agreement will be signed by the union, the union, myself, and the school committee chair.
Any questions on this? Do I have a motion to approve the MOA with Unit C?
So moved.
By Joan, do I have a second? Seconded by Kate. So I poll, so Joan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes four to zero. All right, next item on the agenda, I actually already covered this in our reorg, sorry. We always do it in the reorg, so I just totally forgot it was even down there.
Made a memo. You know what it means. All good.
So there is a memo around the tech board representation and why it's important that Mr. Luff painstakingly put together, so I don't want to gloss over that, that is in the, in the packet. It's, it's been so wonderful to actually have all the materials in the packet. I do want to point that out. All right, so we will gloss over that quickly, and then we will move on to our consent agenda.
Yeah, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda for two donations from Bay State Textiles. One in June for $729.60, and one May, $861.60.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to accept the donations.
Is there a second? Seconded by Kate. Oh, these mute buttons. All right, I will poll individually, Joan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes four to zero. All right, we have moved right along, and that brings us up to school committee agenda. And I will start at the top. Joan, do you have anything this evening?
First, it was meeting, then it was losing my microphone. No, I do not have anything this evening. Good job, Superintendent Luff, in leading us for the first few minutes through the reorg. It is stressful having, I'm not being facetious at all, it is stressful introducing yourself to the, to the community while at the same time reading a very stilted script, trying to get us through reorg, so.
There was a script?
That's, that's it. That's all I have for tonight.
Kate? I don't really have anything. I do want to say thank you also to Superintendent Luff and just, and, and to Mr. Mannion. I'm just welcome, and we are really excited for what's to come. And part of that is a lot of hard work, but I feel optimistic and I look forward to working with you all and my colleagues.
Teresa?
Yeah, just back to what Kate and Joan said, and feel positive about all of us working together as a government team and moving the district forward. For anybody who's watching school committee over the summer, I hope everybody is having a restorative summer and that it just brings to everybody what they need this summer. So, thank you.
And I will echo my colleagues as well. Welcome to Mr. Luff and Mr. Mannion. It's been, like, a little over three weeks, and already, I just, I just feel good about it. I feel good about our current administration team and everything that's been planned and is in motion and looks like it's going to be a wonderful year. I hope that the momentum continues and that we don't scare you off. And that we have, everybody who's watching has a, is having a rustle summer. All of our teachers are having a wonderful rustle summer, and, yeah, that's it. So that brings us to the end of our business meeting. We do need to go into executive session for the purpose of contract negotiations with union personnel, Unit A. So I will entertain, we will only reconvene for the purpose of adjournment. I will need to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Moved by Teresa. Do I have a second? Seconded by Joan. I need to poll individually, even though we're remote or not. So Joan? I see mouth, yes, so I will translate, Kate.
Yes, sorry.
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you very much for joining us. We will be, our next regular, our next scheduled meeting will be on Tuesday, Tuesday, August 27th. That will be a hybrid meeting, and we will be coming to you from the Savage Center at 7:00 PM. So thank you for joining us and have a good night.